Is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, second for Chris. So we do have two candidates for chair. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Nomination cease? All those in favor of Diane Johnson for chair say aye.
Aye.
Aye, there's two. Okay, all those in favor for Chris say aye.
Aye.
All right, you had one for sure.
Ill obscene.
Ill obscene, okay.
Well, I don't think it's fair.
Diane, you have been elected as chair for the planning commission and you can take over the meeting from this point to elect your vice chair.
Nominations for position of vice chair.
I nominate Chris Knobach.
Chris is not second?
I second it.
Further nominations? Further nominations? Further nominations? Hearing none. All in favor of electing Chris as our vice chair say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Stained, so moved. Any additions to the agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda?
Second?
Second.
Motion by Fox, second by Douglas, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. So moved. Minutes from December 9th, and especially our new people, I want you to make sure you... Any questions on the minutes from December 9th? If not, is there a motion to approve?
Approve.
Motion to approve the minutes? Second?
Second. Motion by Douglas, second by Fox, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Moved. Is there anyone here for public input? We have to read it. Public input is intended to afford the public an opportunity to address concerns of the planning commission. Public input will be no longer than thirty minutes in length and each speaker will have no more than three minutes to speak. Speakers may address topics relevant to the governance of the city. Speakers must sign up in advance and must provide their name, address, and topic they intend to address. Comments must be on topic, respectful, pertinent to city business, and adhere to the applicable data privacy rules. Any speaker that violates these rules will be asked to sit down, and if the speaker refuses to comply, they may be removed from the hearing. Speakers shall not address topics that are subject of a public hearing. All such comments shall be made at the public hearing. Planning commission will not generally act on issues raised by the public input, but may choose to schedule consideration of the item on a future agenda. We have Ken Rohr. Is...are you for public input, or...
Yeah.
Or for the conditional use?
On Timber Ridge.
Yeah, so that's...that would be under the public hearing.
Hearings, right?
Yeah. Oh, never mind, so we really don't have public input then?
No.
Okay, moving on to public hearings. Conditional use permit Midwest Building and Equipment Outdoor Sales Lot. Zach?
Good evening, guys. Ed Reimer, the owner of the Cannon Falls Mall, is applying for a conditional use permit on behalf of Midwest Building and Equipment for an outdoor sales lot located at the Cannon Falls Mall. Midwest Building and Equipment sells high-quality, custom-built sheds. Since the applicant is going to be located in the B2 zone, they are required to obtain a conditional use permit under Section 152648, Section I. I was told that the sheds would be stored in the southwest corner of the mall property setback off the Rancho local property line. I know Midwest Building has...or they're currently operating in Hampton, but they've been in Cannon Falls in the past, so...
Questions, discussion?
I just was driving by and I saw there's already sheds there. Is that correct? I was on 52 and saw some sheds in that particular area. So I'm just asking, is it already taken care of, or is that something that...
Well, that's...they have to get approval tonight, so I suppose if they didn't get it, they would have to take them that way.
Remove them, yeah. It was just the other day I went by and I'm like, oh, they're already there, so what are we talking about?
I had a question, too, about this. Are they actually planning on setting up shop and selling them there? Or are they just storing them? I mean, you know what I mean?
Right.
They'll put up a sign and all that, that's what...
Kinda, but it's...they don't actually have any, like, they won't...there isn't gonna be an office at the mall or anything, but it's...they're stored there, but it's for profit, so...
I gotcha.
They have an agreement with the mall property owner. He wants them to be there, so I think they're gonna...they signed a lease, I think, for a year...or they were going to sign a lease for, I think it's a year or two, so...
So that lease for a year or two, it's intended to not just store them, but essentially utilize it as promotional to where if somebody wanted to physically view one, they'd go out there, view it. Would that sale then occur via the mall location or Hampton?
It would occur via the mall location. So, yeah, there's...they're not...it's not...it's all...it's not, like, they're stored there, but it isn't, like, storage for...it's a sales lot is what it falls under, under our code, so they would be, I guess, to my knowledge, you go there, you see something you like, you give them a call, and then they meet you down there, and that's kinda how it works.
And reading through the minutes, it seems as though that the owner of Cannon Falls Mall would be responsible for maintaining and taking care of...
He had to sign off on the development application, because he is the owner, so I guess, yeah, everything would fall back on...onto him, yeah.
So now I do look here, like, it says outdoor sales lots. It says number I-4 is the entire sales lot and off-street parking area is paved. Now, when you look at the picture and driving by there, it looks to me like it's a grass lot, and that's where those were set up. And I'm sitting here wondering if that's a viable situation, because if they're gonna have this around year-round, there's gonna be mud, there's gonna be everything else, people are gonna be trodden through mud to look at the sheds. Is that something that we really wanna have people do? I mean, I know it's his lot, but, I mean, is that something we want potential customers to do, is have to walk through mud?
I guess there is an option, too, of like, hey, this is all fine, but, you know, you have to...you know, you could approve it with the, you know, contingency that it has to be, you know, you have to move everything onto the actual pavement is an option, but...
And this is a one-to-two year, that's what you're saying?
That I've been told, yes.
Okay.
But, and something I'd asked Zach earlier, it would not really result in any additional tax revenue for the city?
I guess the thought process potentially being that those sheds would bring more traffic potentially to the mall and then thereby...
Yeah, it seemed like the mall owner and who he talked to, he said it seemed like, yeah, he was in favor for it, so that's probably the...that's probably his end goal, to get more people in that area.
I guess I have no with...I guess I don't know anything about the comprehensive plan of Cannon Falls in that area, so I'd have to review that, but I guess right now if it's a one-to-two year, I guess I would approve it, you know, just because even though it doesn't bring anything in reality to the city, one-to-two years isn't gonna change too much for the future of the city.
And maybe it would bring some additional traffic into town, and maybe they'd stop and eat.
Yeah.
Yep.
Do we want to make a condition that they park them on asphalt, or they pave that area where they want to park them, or just let it go?
And Chair, I'm, like, referencing the ordinance, I believe in number...Zach, correct me if I'm wrong, but in I-4, that it should be the entire sales lot and off-street parking area is paved?
I think you guys should go ahead and make sure that it's paved, because it is one of the conditions that falls under, so, I mean, he could move them maybe off the grass, or I think there's room back there. When I was talking to Ed, it sounded like he could maybe fit everything in a stack there, so I think they'd still be able to...
They should be kept onto a paved surface then.
Right.
Meet the conditions.
So now, does he own...I'm looking at the map, does he own that, is that the south side of the...
Yeah.
So if nothing else, he could put them on the south side, wouldn't you think? Would that be paved?
Yeah.
I don't know if that would be, because there used to be, what, storage sheds there, and I don't know if they're still there.
I'm not sure the main, like, route to get into Rancho local, how people...
That's right, that's the only way.
If they...
That's right.
Do we have to then modify the conditional use permit to include they must be parked on paved surface?
Right, yeah, you could do that, and then for city council, I could, you know, redo the resolution, right?
So, do we want to go ahead to approve...or recommend the city council to approve this with the caveat that they can only be parked on a paved surface?
I agree.
You've got two resolutions in your packet. Zach is very good to us. He includes one packet to recommend in favor and one to deny, so...
Okay. So when you have this, if you approve, do you put the condition somewhere, or does he...
He will do it for the city council, yeah.
Okay. I guess I would approve if the resolution of having it paved is followed.
So, are you moving that we adopt planning commission resolution 2025-01 with the condition that it...they only be parked on paved area?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. So, move by...move by Douglas, second by Notz. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion's carried, you want to speak to that, or...
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm fine if...I'm fine if they're on the grass, that's all.
Oh, okay.
So...
Second, a public hearing, and I forgot to call for public input.
I was gonna say, we should have...
Oops, did anybody have any public input on the...okay, well, on the wall one? I'm sorry.
It's just generally a question? The stor...or the storage sheds that are already on the grassy area back behind the bank? Is this the same outfit, or, I mean, why are those...
That was my question.
Why are those sheds there behind the bank? I mean, I don't know if that's the same outfit or not, those have been there for a while.
But you're talking the ones along 52?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the ones that I was...
Behind the bank. That's not by the mall, right?
It is behind.
The same outfit, or...
Yeah.
Okay, I just was curious, because those are on the grass, so...
Yes.
That's a very good point. And sometimes I found that if something was existing before we passed an ordinance, I don't think they have to bring it up to code until they do something.
So that, yeah, that would be legal non-conforming is the word, you know, the description of that, so it wasn't...it was legal before you changed the law, therefore, it's allowed to be maintained in a non-conforming state legally up until the point where something is changed. In this, I guess in clarity, just to help me understand, too, because I'm kinda new, were you referring to the...on the map, the storage units on the south side of the mall? Are those...those appeared to me like as just storage units that people would rent and store their stuff in, and what these are, what we're talking about and allowing for is the sale of a storage building that somebody then could put onto their property to store stuff in. So I don't know if the ones that, those white ones on the south side of that property, because I have driven through there before, I think they appear to me like they're just to store stuff, so...
Yeah, just rentals.
Different, I think, just for me in clarity, I think that's a different topic. I don't think that would apply to what we're discussing tonight about selling something in an outdoor lot.
Okay.
Because those are, you know, probably leased spaces for people to store their stuff in.
Okay.
Were you referring to the ones that are out by the bank and not these? So she's not talking about the storage units that are on the property already? If you go a little further south of town, there's a bank.
Okay.
And it's by the Snap Fitness.
Oh.
And currently, there's a couple of storage sheds there that look like they are...
For sale?
For sale, yes.
Okay, oh, wow.
And I don't know if they're...the same company is...has them there as well, or...
Ever permitted to be there?
Right, I think that was what she was referring to.
Okay, I think that's something that we can look into, for sure.
The storage units there that are outside, there is also one inside of the same thing, so I...I'm sure the storage units are all connected to the mall there. They're inside the mall as well, them storage.
Right. But I think we're going even further...are you looking down by Community Resource Bank?
Yep.
Yes.
Way, way down south.
Yep.
So there's even more down there?
Yeah.
Wow. But is that a separate...that's a separate agenda to what we're talking about now? Okay.
I'm just wondering if it was the same outfit, and those buildings are on grass.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And now that you say that, I...
Buying that rule to this one, that's all.
Good point.
I would just say, it's up to the mall owner, because he's got the tar. But when they're bringing in them sheds, they're gonna unload them with a forklift. There's gonna be semi-loads of them coming in there. Is the tar in shape to handle that? But that would be up to the mall owner.
Right.
Damage is done, so...
All right, and you need to close the public hearing for this topic.
Any more for public hearing on the storage shed, outdoor sales lot? Any additional public hearing input? Any additional? Move to close the public hearing, or do we need a motion on that?
No, you close it at a certain time.
Okay. We need to redo our vote.
You probably should.
Yeah.
Just for context, to make sure that you've incorporated any public inputs.
Okay, so, any other...I mean, Jesse, do you want to say anything more about...no?
I think, Jesse, I'm just asking, why would you think grass is okay for them to be on?
Um, because it's the...because it's the owner of the mall, and it's...I get that there's a...written in the code that it has to be paved, but it doesn't...this is a weird one in that it...I don't believe they're actually gonna be out there selling them to people. Right, it's...it's just different, because it's more of an advertisement, right? You drive by, you see it, you think, oh, and then you see the phone number and you call and you get a price, and then maybe you go...you maybe go there to look at one, or you go up to Hampton to look at one. That's why I don't really have a real issue with it being...I don't think people are gonna be driving out there, but I'm still...and I'm still fine with the ordinance, the way that we've written it, to require them to do it, to pave it. It'll probably...it might change whether or not they do it, but also, I just wanted to go on record that I didn't care about it as grass, right?
Thank you.
Yep.
So any further discussion before we do the official vote? Okay, somebody like to recommend we adopt planning commission resolution 2025-01 with the addition of requiring these sheds to be parked on a paved pavement?
I agree.
Second?
So move by Douglas, second by Notz, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? So moved. Now I'll do it correct this next time. Public hearing on variance, Endress, Cannon Falls LLC driveway to service Timber Ridge Estate Lots. Public hearing is now open. Now you get to talk. Yep.
I thought you could have a discussion first.
Yeah, you can open the hearing, you can discuss it as a board, and then you can take public input if that's how you choose, want to do it.
Usually just have the public...
But if you want to take the public input first, you can do that as well.
So...
Either one.
Well, that's how we've done it in the past, mate. We sometimes have conversations. So all you have to do is introduce yourself and address, and then we're good to go.
Ken Rohr, 31029 County, 25 Boulevard. So, my property is right alongside the development. I've read about the variance in the paper, talked to Zach just a little bit, so I don't know a lot about it. I'm concerned about the runoff, especially the two lots on the downhill side from the connector road there. There's been no catch basins. You have a long run there. It's gonna be water runoff, there's gonna be wash, and if it was tarred and done properly, there'd be catch basins and runoff directed in a certain way. But that water all comes down, it's gonna run down onto my property.
So you're south of there?
Because I know, I went out there and looked at it, and the road comes down and you're...and then it goes off to this way. Are you back here, or are you back down where the water would be running off to? Well, my house is up on 25. Oh, okay. But my lot runs a long ways back into there.
Oh.
My lot...
On the west side there.
Goes back into the land that's being developed around it, my property. All right. So I already have wash-off, runoff that has washed a lot of sediment into my pasture from the west side of the development that was happening before. The development hasn't done anything to correct any of that, and now they're starting on the east side with another place that's just gonna wash down on. Some of these variances that I hear have went in out there on that development, I question why all the variances? If it...it should've been planned out better if it was gonna be done, especially them two lots, or four lots now, and then where the future development will go from there. We're talking about just four lots, but the development's gonna go on from there, so is this a time to start with it right, or...I don't wanna see the same thing that's went on up at the high school there, or by the high school with that development, which I read about in the paper, you know, and stuff. People bought something and got a big bill out of it later and stuff, so...
Let me...Zach, if we require paving of the driveway, I know that right now they've got...they're gonna have to have private well, private septic, so there really won't be any...will there be some kind of storm mitigation incorporated in that?
I didn't think there...I didn't think there would be, no. I think there's potential for gravel runoff off those driveways if it was approved, so I don't think...I don't think there's anything in place, at least at the moment, so...
Okay.
So even if they pave it, we might not get any storm mitigation in terms of keeping it off your property?
Well, if it's just paved, yeah, if it's not...
Yeah, with storm.
Should it be a street that has curb and gutter and proper containment of the water? You look at that driveway coming down in there, there's a...on a heavy rain, there's gonna be a lot of more rain come down there. Now you put a house and a garage, and you're...
It's not gonna naturally go towards...
You're apron out in front, and where's all the water gonna go on them lots and stuff, so...
That's a good question.
And it runs off onto somebody else's property, not...it don't stay there, so... And I agree with you, because I was out there looking at it, it's a steep little slope to get down to those homes. I was like, wow. Yeah. So you're basically surrounded by both developments, that's what you're saying your property is? I can say I got city on all four sides of me. So... Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Dawn Lanning. My address is 3244364th Avenue Way, and I do have some paperwork that I'd like to share.
Yeah, give it to Zach, he can hand it over.
You can just pass it on him.
Okay, each one, sorry.
All right, so first off, I just wanna state that I really have no other interest in this subject beyond fair and equitable application of local ordinances. I honestly felt very sympathetic to the homeowners on 72nd Street when not only were they forced to pave the road in front of their house, but also to have to pay for that project so that another developer could have benefit from the project without sharing the cost. They were put into that situation by the lack of city ordinance enforcement of developer requirements when that development was done several years back. The requested variance for the Timber Ridge development will basically do the very same thing with no protection for future landowners, and unless otherwise presented tonight, does not meet the requirements for granting a variance included below. So when you look through your ordinances, first off, there are some requirements for granting a variance. The criteria for granting the variance, a variance... granting the variance, a variance states that there has to be a particular hardship to the owner if the variance isn't granted. Oh, not mine. I had to check. I have that ring too. Um, so first off, there has to be some sort of hardship, um, that this variance will fix, right? And then the other thing is that there has to be something unique to the parcel of land. And there also had, that hardship, any hardship that's presented cannot be based on finances. It cannot be because he wants to reduce the cost of developing those lots. Um, so my questions here, just based, on the basis of even granting a variance, is how has the criteria for this requested variance been met? What hardship will be avoided by granting this variance? Was this hardship created by the developer own actions, like, i.e. lack of planning? So, you know, he's in the middle of the winter and he wants to sell these lots, and now he can't pave it because it's the middle of winter. Well, that's a lack of planning. That is the developer's fault for not getting things, all of his ducks in a row kind of thing. Is this request based on finances or the desire to save money on the cost of developing these lots? And thus a better financial gain? So that is just the requirement for the variance. Now, when you look at some of the ordinances related to subdivision developments, um, it says that, um, that, let's see. Basically, it says that there has to be a land dedication for any development. I'm wondering, has this developer meant any dedication requirements for this development? Um, if so, was it a land dedication that the developer donate some land for development of a green space for this development? A cash deduction or a combination of both? If it was a land dedication, was it included in the final plat approval? If it was a cash donation, how much was the cash donation? Did it meet the requirements in this section that are outlined on the site, based on the size of the development, which is like based on acreage? Has that cash donation been added to the park's budget for the city of Cannon Falls as its own fund, not put into the general fund, but into the park's fund? There is no discretion or exception included in this clause of your ordinances. So that is a requirement, and there is no discretion in whether that can be there or not.
Just so you know, they have dedicated to park areas.
Okay. Within the development?
Yes.
Okay.
If you look at the map, I can show them to you.
That works.
One is actually like a playground park area, and the other one is actually right, uh, west of these little lots there, and that's going to be hiking trails through the woods.
Okay. That covers that one. Thank you. Um, then the next section is to the crux of your variance as far as paving the streets. Um, and basically, it says, "All streets shall be improved with a concrete or botaminous surface. Streets to be shaped, paved, shall be surfaced for a seven-ton axle weight capacity." Um, blah, blah, blah. The wear course of the botaminous shall be placed following the construction season. Um, it can be finished up to two years from the date of the final plat approval. Um, exceptions to this provision may be granted, granted. Okay? So yes, the city council can grant exceptions, but those exceptions really are subject to the criteria for a variance, which again, unless I, unless there's something else that, that's been presented as a hardship beyond finances, the criteria for granting a variance hasn't been met. Um, landscaping, I don't know. Um, so there is also a requirement for a landscape plan, um, for a development of three or more lots. Um, so again, I have a question as to whether there's a landscape plan that's been submitted by this developer. Does it meet the requirements of this section with regard to tree species to be included? Has it been approved by a forester, which is one of the requirements in the ordinance? Was it included in the development package prior to final plat approval? And this provision, this provision is also another one that says shell, and there is no language to any exceptions. So any idea on?
We're going to pass the three minutes.
Okay. So, um, so again, the last item here, specific, this is another section. So not only is the requirements for this variance included in one section, it's included in two sections. It's a very important idea that there are criteria for granting variances. So to break that out, exceptional and undue hardship. What is the hardship that's going to be solved here? Um, and if granting the variance, it does say you can prescribe conditions to be met. So my suggestion would be if this ordinance is going to be granted, then the exception for the, then the exception to paving drives should be included on the deed to every one of those plots. The variance should be granted in perpetuity to protect future landowners from having to pay for something that should have been done by the developer. And should the city council change their mind on the need to pave these drives? If city council changes this decision in the future, it should be the responsibility, their responsibility to pay for the needed improvement. So when you look at approval of variance, it says specifically, "Each and every one of the following apply." Topography. Is there any physical reason?
Yes, but it, okay, I think.
Unique, I'm almost done.
Okay.
Unique. What exactly is so unique to these lots that was not applicable to the lots on 72nd Street? Those homeowners were totally ignored in their pleas, um, to what the city was doing to them. Finances. Again, what is the hardship beyond saving costs and self-created hardship?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public input?
Can I just ask one more question?
Sure.
Yep.
We just want to get home for the kickoff. No.
What's that?
Vikingscape.
So what happens? Are these lots up for sale already? These four lots that?
Yes.
What happens if somebody buys a house and their building, building permit still goes through the city council then, don't it, or not? Nope? All right. So somebody could build a house down there and we still don't know what we're even going to do with the driveways?
No. Well, that's what we decide tonight. Or we don't decide. We recommend the city council. Um, because if they, if somebody tries to pull a building permit, it doesn't comply with the regulations, that would get flagged by Goodview County or Zach.
All right. Thank you.
Any other public input? Other public input? Other public input? Public input is closed. We'll move on to the discussion on whether or not to grant a variance to allow access via gravel driveways. We can either approve it or recommend the knife and send it off to the city council.
I have to say, I drove around and I looked at this, and then I looked at the maps. And the biggest problem I see is on County Road 24, as you go south, that is not city property. So if any new, unless city, unless the map that I saw didn't show the city property properly, everything there is, whatever that might be county, whatever it might be along 24. And so the people there, unless they change everything, the people there would be able to put in a gravel road. And that would stay with the whole contour of 24. But what you're saying, I agree with. So that's what my concern when I first saw it. I'm like, how can, this can be, this little thing could be city, but then everything south, future build out could be anything they want it to be. And so I understand where he's coming from. And that's something that I don't, I can't, I can't agree to this variance at this point, just because I feel that there's a lot of things I look at that just doesn't make sense to me after looking at it and everything.
Yeah, I tend to agree. I mean, I read it over, and to your point, I, I think this is on the developer, right? I mean, they knew they were going to put estate lots in there. They knew what that, you know, property looked like. And I think, you know, they've run up to a point to where perhaps they're looking at margin and it's not looking as, you know, advantageous as they thought it would because they have to add in, you know, paved driveways. But I, I think that's, that's not something the city can put on future residents, right? That, that needs to go on the developer itself, right? And to suggest that the future residents, that'll be their responsibility. Now you run into the issue of, number one, if it's doable, right, financially from the residents. And secondly, you're going to have, what, essentially four different residents potentially hiring four different contractors to potentially put in four different drives. I just, it's, it's the developer's responsibility, you know, according to city code as it is right now. So to grant the variance just based on the fact that the developer's saying it's a, it's a financial strain, well, that's, that's unfortunate for them, but that's the reality of it, right? So, you know, build into the cost of, you know, the, the future sale price of the home, not put the burden on the future homeowner.
Jesse, comments?
Yeah, I, I understand. Um, I think, um, if this gets turned down by the city council, that, um, all that's going to happen is that these four lots are going to be sold, um, more expensively, right? Um, so it's going to, it's going to make the developer, um, it's going to be slightly more difficult, um, for them to sell these lots. Um, because instead of being a, whatever price, it's going to add another forty, fifty, hundred thousand to the sales price, right? Because they're, because they're just going to cover their costs by what they can sell it for. It's just going to make their margins tighter. Right? Um, I don't have, um, I don't, I wasn't in when, I think when this, when, when this was sold, um, I know that the developer got quite a deal, um, I think for, for at least the one area. I don't know about this estate spot, if, if that was also part of that deal or not. Um, but yeah, I'm fine with having the developer and the potential new homeowner, you know, as, as long as, as long as everybody knows upfront, right? And if you're going to develop it and you're going to sell the lot, and here's the house, and here, you know, you know what the price is going to be. Um, when you have to retroactively do stuff, that becomes painful because now you're forcing, um, homeowners later potentially to fork over even more money to put in a, an approved, you know, surface. So.
Thank you.
Yep.
And, and going back a few years, uh, when there was another request to get a variance for another property that wanted to have gravel driveways, the, both the Planning Commission and the city council denied that application. So our policy has been to say, if this is the city code ordinance, then we follow it. And at some point, you know, all of that area around there will probably be annexed into the city, in which case, everybody will have to have paved driveways.
That's what I was wondering.
But that's way in the distance, so. Any further discussion? It sounds like everybody's kind of leaning towards denying the application. Would somebody, so that would be Planning Commission Resolution 2025-04, who recommend that the conditionally, or the, uh, variance for gravel driveways be denied. Somebody like to move that?
I'll move it.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Douglas, second by Notch to deny the application. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? Stayed? So moved. We will send that on to the city council. Uh, discussion, change of Planning Commission time.
So Zach, do you want to?
Yeah, I think I can. So it sounds like there's, might be a conflict with people coming from the library board to Planning Commission. So it sounded like, um, might be in the best interests of the commission to move the time back from 6:30 to 6:45. Um, and, and I'm not entirely sure.
Library Board's going to change their Monday meeting date.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Okay.
I was just at their meeting.
I guess we can.
Well, that provides more input than we got, so.
Yeah, they, they are, they are, uh, because of the conflict with both Finance Committee and Planning Commission, you know, five, 5:30, 6:30, uh, they're going to move their meeting to first, third or fourth Monday. Or at least they're considering that, so.
Okay.
I would think we could wait on them at this point.
Sure. Then we, then I think no further action on that at this time.
But thank you for considering them. Any other things anybody wants to bring up? Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Being adjourned.